All right, Christine. Okay, I think we're ready to go, aren't we? We'll call this meeting to order. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome to all here. We will move on with roll call.
Brooks.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Jones.
McInerney.
Wells.
Here.
Mayor Beasley.
Here. All right, we have enough to proceed to go on, so the agenda, we have one item, item 7A has, needs to be removed because it's going back to P and Z. Other than that, I don't think there's any changes to the agenda as printed. I would entertain a motion. A motion from Brooks, second by Housman, to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, item four, we have the minutes of the July 13 briefing meeting and the July 17 regular council meeting. Would also entertain. Well, a motion from Housman, second by Wells, to approve the minutes of those two meetings. Questions of discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Item five is the claims for August 7. Motion from Fish, second by Wells, to approve the claims. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the consent calendar, we have a plat of lot 27A, block 2, Brandon Park, second addition, plat of track 1, Thomas B. Odie addition, and plat of track 7, Westview Estates. I will entertain a motion and a second for approval. Motion from Brooks, second by Housman, to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That takes us into our visitors and timed items. We have a presentation from our engineer and the intern. Ryan, our intern, who has been squirreled away in a corner in City Hall doing all this. Yes, he has.
No, he's been out and about a lot, so people probably saw him in his big red Dodge truck that he drove around this summer. He put a few miles on it, so it was good. Well, this is a good, good crowd. I'm glad everybody came here for the GIS presentation for tonight. It's gonna be, it's gonna be really interesting. I want to talk about GIS tonight real quick and just give you guys an update on where we're at. This was the last opportunity that we had to come before you. This is Ryan's last week, so we thought we would kinda show you what he's done and do some fun kinda walkthrough stuff with one of the maps that we've created. So, real quick, I set a GIS handout for you. I don't want to go through that. GIS is really just a kind of a fancy way of mapping. And we talked about this about a year and a half ago, about creating a GIS system for the city of Brandon. And a few of the things that I wanted to make sure of before we got started that we all understood. Number one, that obviously that the funding was available for whatever we needed to make sure that the system, once we got it started, that it was gonna be operational. Number two, that we were gonna update it and continue to update this map. It's been discussed for quite a while. Even when Wayne was here, I think they discussed putting together a GIS system for the city of Brandon. It's really important that we understand that we continue to update that, so that that information is, is always as recent as possible. So, as the information or as for our infrastructure changes, we want to make sure that we're updating that on a continuous basis. And then number three, that it's user-friendly. The information that we've collected to make sure that our staff, it's really, a lot of it is used for our staff. The infrastructure that we've collected to make sure that with the system that we've, when we're done with it, that the utilities department and others that are gonna be using this, that they can actually go into our GIS system and understand it and use it on a daily basis potentially. So, with that being said, we decided to hire an intern, summer help, for this summer. And one of the, when we looked at our budget, I was expecting it to cost around $10,000, which is right about where it was at. We also budgeted $25,000 for GIS software and hardware, training, and potentially some consulting. By hiring Ryan, who is very well-versed in this, we ended up saving actually quite a bit of money. I figured the money that we spent on an intern actually saved more than what we would've spent on consulting. And with that being said, he also did a lot of research before we even hired him to look at what we needed for hardware and software. So, we were able to actually save some money by doing that, so. So, that was, that was really good. With that being said, we had a few goals in mind when we first started. When we, when we looked at this system, the information that we wanted to collect, I looked at our manholes, our fire hydrants, and our storm sewer system and thought that if we got that information collected spatially, very accurate collection information that we, that we have, the receiver that we purchased is within accuracy, it's within one to two feet physically out in the real world. And so, that was, that was, the goal was to collect just the sewer, the water, and the storm. And so, I'm gonna kinda, I'm gonna, I want to introduce Ryan, and I want Ryan to kinda introduce himself, I guess, and I want, I want him to kinda tell you what he's done this summer. So, I'm gonna turn it over, turn it over to Ryan here. He's got a few things he wants to show you on the TV up here, so if everybody can see that, and then also over on the screen over there, whichever one's easier to see. So, Ryan, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
All right, well, as Paul said, my name is Ryan Melama.
You'll have to go back over there to do his presentation.
So, as Paul said, my name is Ryan Melama. I'm from a small town in Nebraska, Arlington, Nebraska, not Texas or Virginia. And I'm a third-year student at University of Nebraska Omaha, studying in geography, and hence the GIS. Well, so, as Paul also said, our goal was to map out the sanitary sewer manholes, the water hydrants, the water valves, and maybe a little bit of the storm sewer, but here I'll show you exactly what I did. All right, so this map that I'm pulling up right now is all of the, it's quite a list. Okay, so this is the sanitary sewer manholes, the water hydrants, the sanitary sewer lift stations, the water valves, the wells, the stormwater outfalls, the inlets, sanitary sewer gravity main, the storm lines, and the force, the force main for sanitary sewer. And so, there are 898 sanitary sewer manholes, 948 water valves, and 482 water hydrants. So, yeah, as you can see, there are a lot of points, and how I collected all this using an iPad and the app, and then the GPS receiver that we purchased, is I physically drove to every single one of these points, hopped out of the truck, pushed a few buttons, hopped back in, and drove to the next one.
He had an antenna on his head.
Oh, yeah.
Inserted in his hat. It was really good. We made sure to get a picture of that, too.
Yeah, oh, I want to see the picture. I'll show you guys. All right, so there's the antennas right there, and there's the manhole.
No, I'm not kidding. He has an antenna in his hat.
Yeah.
It helps with the accuracy, the more the...
Yes, so, every single one of these points represents one of those features that I was telling you about earlier. So, for example, all you, literally all you have to do is click on one of these points, and this is a sanitary sewer manhole. It has the room elevation, the invert elevation, the depth, whether or not it's paved over, when it was installed, and when I entered in the data. And so, for...
So, one example, real quick, I'm just gonna interrupt. So, when we get phone calls, Raleigh or Donovan will get a phone call, and they wanna know how deep a manhole is, and physically have to go out and, and actually measure down in the manhole. If we don't have this information, and again, this is an application that they can open up on their phone when they're receiving the information or a question, and they can click on that manhole in this. It's an app. It's, it's just like a Facebook app on your phone. You open that up, Raleigh and Donovan can go and click on that manhole, and then give that information to the developer or the contractor right away.
Yep, and so, let's say that you either, the manhole isn't visible, or it's buried in like 10 feet of snow, 'cause you guys get that much up here. So, literally, all you have to do is take the iPad and a Garmin GPS receiver that we also bought. It gets you within about five foot, three to five foot. And so, example of this is this manhole right here.
This is in the industrial park.
Yep, this is in the middle of a bean field, and so, this right here is what gave away where the manhole was.
This is a marker that we put out in areas where we don't have surfacing around the manhole to protect the manhole, but in this case, it's a, it's basically a marker in a bean field that doesn't survive plowing and disking.
So, then, instead of being like, let's say they need to get to the manhole when this bean field is fully grown, it's gonna be next to impossible to find it, especially with a marker that high, you know? And so, this way, with the GIS system, you can have it up, it'll have your location, and as you walk towards it, you'll get closer to the point. Once you're over it, you're over the dot, and then you just gotta dig down, and you're right there. So, then, yeah, so there are a lot of points here. So, then, once we were finished with this, we did a transportation map with roads.
Just to back up again, that was what we expected to get done this summer, what we just showed you. We didn't, we didn't input a lot of data. This was just collection. So, as far as moving forward, there's a lot of information that needs to apply, be applied to each one of those points.
Yeah.
But this is what Ryan did here in a matter of about a month and a half.
Yep.
We had two and a half months to do this, and we've, that's, I thought we were being pretty aggressive, but he did a lot more than what I expected, so. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so now with the transportation map with all the roads, so, let's say for a project, you need to know the square yardage of a certain section of road. Well, what I did is I, Paul had the width of all the roads, and so, I was able to calculate using the width the square yardage of, let's say, this section of road. So, and all you have to do is literally click on it, and there you go. So, yeah, it's very user-friendly, and let's say that you wanted to find all the roads in the city that are, or sections in the city that have less than 25,000.
More than 20,000.
20,000 square yards. So, then, all, this is all, this is super easy step. What you do is put it here.
So, this is what's called a filter, and we don't want to get into these details too much. Just wanted to show you one of the applications that we can use with this GIS system. This is, this is that map that Ryan's talking about. This will actually filter out all the streets that are less than 20,000 square yards. So, that's what you see now, and the red lines are the roads that are over 20,000 square yards. This is something that we can use for water pressure at a cert, at a fire hydrant. We could filter out pressure that is static pressure at a fire hydrant of, say, 65 pounds. We can filter out that 65 PSI fire hydrant, less than that, and we can see the ones that are more. It'll turn them off automatically.
Yep, so that's a very useful tool that we have. So, now, this is the kinda fun map that I built. So, if you'll all go to Google Chrome, it's the little circle down here at the bottom.
Go on your computer. We've actually uploaded a bookmark.
Yep.
Ryan is talking. Can you go and show them on your...
So, the bookmark is gonna be called Parks and Recreation, right up here in the upper left-hand corner. So, if you click on that, we just made this map public earlier today. And as soon as it loads. So, if you need help, just give me a holler.
Does everybody have it open?
You guys have it on your computer, too.
All right.
Brian.
Sweet. So, all you have to do, well, so you zoom in once, and then all these features start to pop up. And so, these are all the parks, along with, let's see, baseball fields, restrooms. You guys can kinda play around with it a little bit. You got tennis courts. You can click on a tennis court. I'll have a picture of it. Whether or not it's open. You can click on the pool. I have a picture of the pool, the hours. Yeah, and then, one really cool thing is if you go to McCarty Park and zoom into one of the picnic shelters and click on it, 'cause they're one of the ones we can reserve, has a pic, it has a picture of the picnic shelter where you can reserve it, the picnic shelter number, so it's not very confusing when they go.
Go, go back to that, Ryan, again. Is that, is that the one that you had that clicks and goes back to our, it's linked to our website?
No.
Okay, sorry.
So, and then, so as most of you probably know, we have a separate webpage for each park. And so, if you click on one of the parks, you'll see a park website link. And so, if you click on that, it'll go straight to the webpage for that park.
Which we'll update. This, these are older pictures and
Yes.
Needs a little attention.
Then, also, it has the same thing with the golf course. So, you look at the picture, feel like golfing in 18 holes, and you can click, and it'll bring you right to the course website. Did you, did you enter all of that information yourself? Yeah, so then... Also, if you go to... If you go to Pioneer Park and zoom in a bit, you'll see the red icon transform into a bunch of blue dots with numbers, and that is the...
Go ahead, say it. No.
In Nebraska, it's called fraluf.
Yeah, frisbee golf.
Frisbee golf, yeah.
So, then you can click on it, and it'll have the part is, the distance, hole number, all that stuff.
So, the icons can change as you scroll in, and, and then show them on the, show them on the legend.
Oh, yes.
Right on the left-hand side there. There's a, this is all really interactive, which is what, that's the, that's really the beauty behind GIS is these maps are meant to be fun. We, we looked at Sioux Falls as a GIS, their parking rec map, and, and sort of modeled it after that a little bit, but we can... Ryan, really, this was his baby. He really took it, took some ownership of this, and really wanted to make it look, look neat and fun, and it has all of the, if you look at the outlines of all the houses, he actually took the time to draw all those, too.
Yeah.
I don't think he had anything else to do at night, so he just did it for free.
So, for those of you who don't know...
No, he didn't do it for free. We paid him, I guess.
Every time I walked into City, to City Hall, Ryan was sitting over there at the computer, and I, I've never actually talked to him. I just assumed you were kinda surfing the net in your, in your downtime, but but now I see you've really, that's, that's amazing. I, I'm very appreciative of that.
Yeah.
So, then, as Paul said, we're gonna put this on the city website. So, the public will be able to use it.
Yeah, and again, this is, we want to make sure that this information's getting out. This is something that people actually have to go find, and so, it's a URL. I posted it on Facebook today, so if people have liked our Facebook site, they'll see that URL on there along with basically that image. So, it's just a matter of getting the information out. A lot of the maps that we create are internal, for more internal use. Maps like this get to be kinda fun. We could, but there's a purpose for it. I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of information on here that this is sort of, I don't wanna say a transition away from websites, 'cause they're still useful, but this is a, it's more map-oriented, interactive. People can visually see what they're trying to find, and I think that, that certainly is attractive. But we can create other maps, other useful maps, zoning maps that we can have in-house, socio-economic maps that, we, we use CCOG a lot for master planning. Master planning can be done with, with GIS. That is the intent, is to have good record-keeping. Some of the things that we've discussed even with council is, we do not have electronic files of any of our building permits, new housing permits. It's all in a file in City Hall and, and very susceptible to any damage. And so, by having things electronically filed, obviously, that's, that's what we want, and that creates that database that we can, that we can refer to. And again, that, that's public information, so we could have that on, on lots. If it were something that we could pull up in-house, it's certainly a lot easier doing that, a lot more efficient, saves a lot of time. Instead of going to a file to find that information, it's right here at our fingertips. So, moving forward, those are some things that, that we need to focus on as a city to, to continue to keep our, our records up to date, our as-built drawings, as we get drawings back from construction projects, to make sure that that information's getting inputted in this system, and, and moving forward, we, I really, I really see this as a tool that, that is worth the investment. And if we keep that in the forefront and continue to make sure that we're getting this information, this is really just the tip of the, tip of the iceberg right now. We haven't, we've just input the physical information. We haven't input any of the data that goes along with that, so we'd like to keep this at the top of the list.
Thank you.
Did we miss anything, Ryan? His last day, Ryan's last day is on Thursday. We're gonna miss him. We had a meeting this last week with Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls GIS. They have a quarterly meeting, and they're gonna, we were, this was the first time that we were invited. They were very impressed with the amount of information that we have gotten put into this system in two and a half months, so. I put a plug in for Ryan. He's gonna be looking for a job after this year, after he graduates from UNO, so.
All right, well, nice job, Ryan. Yes, thank you, yes. Anything else planning, or planning and zoning, visitors and dimed items? I assume you guys are here for some reason other than the, the GIS. What we do is that you have to come up, state your name, your address, and then you are, you can address the council. There's a little purple button. If you push that, the microphone will turn on. There you go.
Thank you. I thought you all came to hear what I was gonna say, but it turns out it was just for the cool maps. So, a little anticlimactic to follow up against. My name is Hannah Wachus. Been a member, or I guess a resident to Brandon for 10 years, and my husband and family and I live at 113 West First Conifer Street, excuse me. So, I'm here actually today just to talk to you, or I guess ask for consideration for the Brandon City Transit Bus to work with a preschool out of Valley Springs, South Dakota, that is just starting up. My son, or our son, is four years old. He'll be attending preschool this fall. And because of some changes that happened at a local preschool that no longer has the, the teachers to be able to fill that void, there's a preschool that opened up in Valley Springs, which nearly 35 members will be attending, and 20 of those are from the Brandon community, and that number's actually climbing. And so, because of the working schedules that a lot of the parents have, it's difficult to get our children to Valley Springs for preschool. And so, I'm just asking for the consideration of the council to explore allowing the Brandon Transit Bus to, to go to Valley Springs.
How many days are they attending?
Nope, great question. So, there's three sessions. One session is Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Currently, the time is 8:40 to 11:40. The next session is Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 12:30 to 3:00. And then, the third session is Tuesday and Thursday from 8:40 to 11:40. Now, that preschool, because it's just in its formation, is very, very flexible and willing to work with the Brandon Transit Department very closely. And so, those 8:40 to 11:40 sessions are very flexible, pending what the space availability of the bus would be. And so, that, that could start as early as 8 o'clock if it had to, or 8:15 if it had to, pending what your, your current obligations are.
I know that around that noon hour, that's the hotspot of our, our buses. They are, they run to the preschools. They pick up the preschool kids. It's something that we will definitely consider and discuss.
Absolutely. And is that something where if you have more questions, that I give you contact information to, to learn more about, or just have that contact information at the next meeting?
You, yeah, you can give us your contact.
Absolutely. My phone number is 507-215-2420.
What was your first name again?
Hannah.
Hannah, have you met with any of the other parents? Do you know how many are considering this?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe if you all grouped at the same time or something, if that was possible.
Yeah, so, there's 20 current Brandon residents that are interested in the trans, transit bus. Yes.
I thought you meant there was a 20 attending, but 20 are actually interested in the bus?
There's actually 35 students total.
Okay.
And 20 of them are from Brandon, and 20 of them would have need for the bus.
Oh.
Yep, or would have, have a strong interest in the bus. Now, which session they fall in, you know, that's still being determined, but trying to group them together as best as possible to allow it to be as easy as possible for the Brandon Transit System is, is obviously something we'd be willing to be, work with.
Has that opened up yet, or, I know they're in the process of working on it, but...
Yep, so...
When are they planning on opening?
First open house for students to come and see is tomorrow night, and it would start, I believe, I don't know the date off my, top of my head, but I believe it's the first week in September that classes would start.
How about September 4?
Ish.
Well, that's Labor Day. I doubt that they'd go to Labor Day school on Labor Day.
Yeah, I, I don't think that they would make four-year-olds go to school on Labor Day, but yes. Okay, well, thank you for the consideration.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Anderson, I believe you are up with the Big Sioux Lift Station? Or Mr. Brown. We're, we're entertained by Mr. Brown today.
I'll try to keep this as brief as I can. And what I wanted to do, first of all, is talk about, at the last meeting, we kinda left you with, we're still in the workout mode with the contractor on the total bio solids. But let me back up a little bit and talk briefly about the lift station and where we're at with the lift station. The lift station project is finalized out. We're working on the HVAC. There's some HVAC improvements that are still needed as a, as a follow-up item that is still being worked out at this point. We should have more information at our next meeting on that, as far as where that's at with our sub consultants and the contractor on how that's gonna get worked out. We met with them, I think we're meeting tomorrow with them on site to make sure everybody's on the same page, and then we can get that, the HVAC upgraded as needed to make sure we have enough heat in there for the winter. That's really what it amounted to, is the heating system. The bio solids progressing. The contractor's back to work. As you know, at the last meeting, we kinda talked about, you know, holding up here and seeing where we're at with the total quantities and whatnot, and we've been able to do a lot more investigation on the quantities. We're, we still have a long ways to go with determining where our actual quantities are with the bio solids removal. We've, we've completed about half of cell 1, about three-fourths, if not, probably about three-fourths of cell 2, and they haven't touched cell 3 yet. And so, they've, actually, over the weekend, they moved back into cell number 1, and actually are starting to work on some of the bio solids in cell 1 again. Our total solids content has, has reduced significantly since we've pulled them back a little bit. Their methods of removing the bio solids has changed, and that has also helped reduce the total solids content, and so, that's our big controlling dollar amount out there. So, at that, I, I guess at this point, I really don't have a lot more information that I can share with you, unless, Brian, do you wanna add more to that than what we've talked about? We're gonna have, at our next meeting, I know we'll have a lot better understanding of where we're gonna be at. We're moving a lot closer with the contractor on negotiating a, a change in unit prices on the bio solids.
Are we still, once we're removing them, are we field applying them still?
They are still field applying them right now, yes. We're anticipating the level of dry, as dry as they're getting in cell 3, that they may be able to do a different method there, where they actually unload it and just haul it out to the field, which would be out to Odie's site. So, that would be a plus. That'd be an advantage, where we wouldn't have to actually press it or land-apply it. That would just load it out and then haul it out to Odie's site. And so, that's what we're hoping to do on a lot more of these bio solids going forward, so. Thank you. Brian, do you wanna add some more to that? You wanna wait till...
I saw it working today, I think it was, so, yeah, it was working good.
Yeah. Okay. There's been some, there's... Yeah, there's been some heated discussions. I'll be honest with you. Yeah, there's been some heated discussions, I'll be honest with you guys, with our contractor and us because of the, uh, methods. And, um, the quantity overrun is not all due to just an underestimation on our end. I do admit that we did have an underestimation. However, uh, there's been some other things happening that the percent solids has, um, increased significantly based on, uh, the type of, the procedure that the contractor's used in, in removing the bio solids. So, that's what we've been working on closely with the contractor. Hopefully, we can get that dialed in, and it looks like we've done a lot better job now, so.
All right. Thanks, John. Okay. Item 9, golf course.
Uh, they're putting a sign up. If you haven't noticed, if you drive by, they're putting a sign up by the putting green.
Big, nice rock.
Yep, nice rock to match those that are out on the course. It's been busy, um, getting ready for the stroke play, State Stroke Play Championship. That's about it. Done installing, uh, cart paths until after the, the stroke play championship.
Is that just a, a sign that says, I haven't seen what's on, ran a golf ball or...
They didn't work it up there on the road? Or, I know it's Minnehaha County, but...
They were out there today. They were modeling the traffic.
Yeah, they'll, they'll probably be out of the city limits in another day or two, I would guess.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Item 10, we had the police report, the inspection report, and the fire department report, and we have an agreement with the school district and a school resource officer. Evening, Chief. How are you today?
Good seeing you again.
I'm doing well. I'm doing well. I don't have anything as exciting as the GIS to present you. Nothing to pop up. Well, I guess that's up on the board. Um, we reworked the, uh, school resource officer contract with the Brandon School District, and, uh, it has gone to their board and they have signed it. Um, instead of a, a set monetary amount, we base it, runs around 69% of an officer's time is spent in the school, and that's what the reimbursement is based on. And then also, if they have events, if they want a, an officer present at, um, we'll be able to recover some of the overtime expenses for that. So, I think the contract is, is, as good as we can get it right now.
So, we down to one then?
We're, we're down to one, uh, set in the school. Um, what I can tell you is that during the school year, we will still be maintaining a good relationship with both the middle school, intermediate school, and, and the elementary schools. So, our presence will still, still be there, but they won't be assigned specifically to the school or to an office within the school.
And you're happy with this agreement?
I am.
Okay.
Can you make a motion?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the school resource officer agreement with the school district. Second.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to approve the school resource officer agreement with the school district. Any questions or discussion?
Actually, can you remind us again who the officer of school resources is?
It'd be, uh, Officer Anthony Lingen.
Yeah, Officer Lingen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anything else, Chief?
Uh, nothing that I have unless there's questions. Hearing none.
I think we're good. All right. Okay, moving on to item 11, park and rec.
On page 60, you've got a proposal from Arc Inc. for the architecture and design for the Aspen Park restroom concession stand building that's part of the Field A renovations. Their proposal is for 8% of the construction costs. At this point in time, the, uh, construction estimated cost is about $350,000, so it's, uh, $28,000 roughly for Arc Inc. They've been working diligently with Baseball Association for quite some time on the, on the project.
So, we need a motion?
Yep.
Make a motion.
Uh, motion from Fish, second by Wells, to approve the, um, building proposal at Aspen Park from Architecture Incorporated. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anything else, park and rec?
No more.
All right. Item 12, we have an opening on, um, P&amp;Z, and we had about seven very, very good candidates. And Brian and I read their, uh, resumes, I guess is what we asked for. And I took into consideration, um, how long they've been in, in the community was one of my important things. Um, any public service, anything like that. And wading through all those, I came up with a lady who has been on planning and zoning before. Uh, she served under Mayor, um, Schultz, and so she was part of that where the city expanded at a rather, rather rapid rate. And so, my recommendation is Alyssa Teely. And she's in the audience today, too, so...
She was.
Oh, she left. Oh, she left. But anyhow, she, she's been on planning and zoning. She was the editor of the local paper for a while. Um, if you've been in the city as long as I have, you remember her dad ran the café, so, she is my appointment.
And she would be appointed to fill out the remaining term for Linda Weber, which expires in April of 18.
Yep.
I will move approval of that appointment. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve my recommendation of Alyssa Teely. Um, any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'd like to go on record to thank all the people that sent me their resume. Um, it's, it was a tough decision. There were some very, very talented people that wanted to serve the, the community, and hopefully, we will keep a hold of those resumes in case there's anything else that we need. So, moving on, we have preliminary plan for Roeang Industrial Park.
If you look on page 64 of your packet, it's a proposed layout for the property. The Development Foundation is purchasing from Ordel Roeang north of Hemlock Boulevard for the expansion of the industrial park. It just shows you the preliminary layout, including location of the railroad tracks and future extensions of plum and walnut.
This is how you choose your...
Correct. Planning and zoning approved, the preliminary plan recommended is approved to the council.
I'll make a motion to you first. Sir.
I have a motion from Fish, second by Wells, to approve the preliminary plan for Roeang Industrial Park. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Um, anything else, administration?
Sir.
All right, moving on. Item 13, we have recommendation of award for the 2017 chip seal project.
Joe's spending money again.
They say we've had both of these companies...
Yep.
...do our chip seals before.
Yeah, so we had, uh, we had some money left over in the street maintenance budget, which we had talked about doing a chip seal project. Again, don't wanna necessarily go away from the project. It works really good in the application in our industrial parks where we don't wanna shut the streets down for any length of time just due to deliveries and, and these being businesses. So, I'd gotten two quotes from the two contractors that, uh, have done most of the work in the city of Brandon and the Road Guy Construction Company. In the amount of $38,475 was the low quote, so I'd like to move forward with allowing them to do that project. You can see the streets that we're looking at doing on the map on sheet 73. This is basically the entire industrial park north of Interstate 90 and west of Corson.
Um, I see that we budgeted or estimated at 37, and we're accepting a bid at 38.
Yes, sir. I felt that that was, uh, was fairly close to the estimate. Close enough to, uh, allow these guys to do the work. If we didn't have a quote less than 50,000, this would not, we would be bidding this project.
Yes.
Okay. I felt this was a good opportunity, a good timing, and so I would recommend accepting their quote.
Motion to approve the Road Guy. Second.
A motion from Wells, second by Brooks, to approve the, um, chip seal bid to Road Guy out of Yankton. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, DK Construction Pay App Number 2 for Street Repair for the Slurry Seal.
This is a second pay application to DNK. We had hired this contractor to do the street repair portion of our Slurry Seal project. This was some additional curb and gutter that they had removed that did not get put on the first application. And we also have some sidewalk on this project that we will be removing and replacing in the next phase of our Slurry Seal in 2018. So, uh, we will have a couple more of these pay apps, but this is pay app number 2 in the amount of $4,190.50. Would recommend approval of that.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion from Wells, second by Fish, to approve. Questions or discussion?
Why are you kidding?
'Cause I hear you mumbling, you know, she's not understanding.
Mine, no, my page numbers aren't the same as what's on here. Yeah, the page numbers on here are not matching them, but not here.
Okay, yeah. If you go to page 77, it's $4,190.50.
Is there any on top of that?
With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Um, item D, Asphalt Surfacing Company Pay App Number 2 for Redwood Boulevard. Improvements from Split Rock Boulevard to Split Rock Creek. On page 79.
This is application number 2, uh, for progress made on the Redwood Boulevard, Boulevard project. Uh, the east, uh, two-thirds of the project's been paved. We're working on the west, uh, area that was really soft. Contractor's still working on that. That, the, that along with the topsoil work is what's remaining on that project, and we'd recommend approval and, uh, authorization and approval of this pay application.
I'll make a motion to approve. Sir.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to approve the Pay App Number 2 for Asphalt Surfacing for Redwood Boulevard improvements. Questions or discussion?
Do we have a time frame, John?
Um, I would say, um, probably by the end of this week, we'll, uh, have a pretty good idea if we get that west end paved. Uh, we'll, if not, uh, it'll be, we'll be working on a change order to change out that base, to, uh, crush concrete or something like that. We've got the contractor working on, uh, stabilizing that west end right now. So, I'd say by the end of this week, uh, we'll know, uh, what's happening with the base, the egg base, the gravel surfacing area.
All right.
Is there a, is, I've gotten a lot of call, have you gotten a lot of calls also?
No, I'm just wondering, are we behind, are we behind schedule?
Yes, yes. They're about three weeks behind schedule right now, so...
Yep. Okay. It is, it's hard on the people.
It is. And it's been, uh, you guys, uh, the golf course has been very patient, uh, but yet they've been very vocal. Uh, and, uh, we've received bill invoices from the contractor, from the golf course for delays on their part, but, uh, we've talked through them. Hopefully, they'll, those don't keep getting sent to us, but, uh, there's, that's been, uh, it, he's been very, uh, patient recently, but, uh, the project is about three weeks behind, and, um, we're work...
Is there a reason why they're three weeks behind? I mean, we haven't had a lot of rain.
Um, uh, I would say a lot of contractor delays, um, associated with the unstable base. So, it started out with the unstable base. I don't know if you remember when we had, um, our section was, uh, not what it probably needed to be going into the project, and then we added, uh, a bunch of fabric and base. And during that process, took about two or three weeks to go through that process, along with, there's other things that the contractor, uh, could've been doing during that time, uh, such as, um, you know, doing the concrete work once. Instead, they were doing some of the concrete work three times. Uh, they've got, we've had a subcontractor that was not up to par, so we've had a lot of remove and replace, new concrete that they just put in. So, and we still got an inlet that has to get repaired and some, uh, sidewalk ramps, but those items are behind the curb, and those are supposedly getting those worked out this week as well. So, hopefully, that's all done by the end of this week. It's just whether or not we get that west end paved by the end of the week.
Is there a penalty? Is it paid? Yeah.
Yeah, this, this here is a pay request that's still, we're still retaining dollars, so this is work that's completed. So, I do believe this should be paid, so...
How much are we retaining? For...
Uh, there's, um, 300 and, I'm on, we still have, um, hang on a second, I'm looking at it. 330 minus.
I mean, 'cause they should, three weeks behind, things to be paid.
So, we've got about, we're still holding out about, uh, $140,000.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions, others? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks, John. Um, Sukup Construction Pay App Number 2, Brandon Park Street Improvements.
This project is progressing, uh, pretty well. We're behind a little bit on this one as well, the contractor is, I should say. Uh, amount due this application, uh, this next application is 253, I believe that says. 253, 277, 91. Uh, we recommend, uh, authorization and payment of that amount. Um, they, we've moved into Phase 2, as you all know, and we're working on, uh, the utilities in that section. They're working on the subgrade and base on the first phase, and, uh, so that's been something that, uh, we've had some soft areas there as well, but their contractor's working towards, uh, firming that up and getting, uh, a base in there. So, uh, we should be moving towards, uh, pavement as early as, uh, next week, I would think on that second phase. So, or the first phase, sorry.
How far are they behind?
About two weeks on the underground utilities, so... And that has to do with, uh, the underground contractor was, uh, got a slow start, if you remember. Originally, they were, they, they fell a week, then two weeks, then three weeks, and now we feel they're about two weeks behind right now, so...
Paul, are you okay with this?
Yeah, I'm fine with this. This contractor's done it, I mean, he, like John said, they fell behind the first couple of weeks. They've been trying pretty diligently to get caught up. The weather hasn't been favorable. They've got curb and gutter down on the first phase, moving forward with the paving in the second phase. Those two phases, if you remember right, when we set those plans up, they're not necessarily phases with substantial completion dates. Those, we just set it up that way so that we could keep property owners in their driveways as long as possible. So, those two phases have come together now, and that's where, now we have two projects basically open, and they're trying to move forward as quick as they can. You don't want the contractor to leave because they might get started on their project, so we gotta keep moving on the project. Now it's open, we're trying to get it tightened back up and get the asphalt down. There's significant progress on the project.
But I was just talking to Brent. Brent feels that they'll be done, uh, probably well in advance of the completion date. It's just their original schedule, they're behind, uh, a couple of weeks on the underground utility work. So, as a whole, like Paul was saying, is it actually, when it actually comes together, they'll probably be done on time or before, before the schedule, completion date.
What was...
It's on the sheet, can you scan down on that?
September 15th?
September 15th.
Thank you.
Cool, late. Good night, David.
September 15th, whatever our completion date is on the contract there, it should show up on page 2 there.
I'll make a motion. Sir.
A motion from Hausmann, second by Brooks, to approve Pay App Number 2 to, um, Sukup Construction for Split Rock Boulevard to Split Rock Creek. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on. Christmas decorations for our lamp poles.
The council indicated you might be interested in purchasing Christmas decorations for this Christmas. I gave you some examples uh from one supplier. There's numerous suppliers. I would like to ask for some input from the council or council members as to which designs you would like to purchase.
They go all over in price range, don't, don't they?
Yep, they're all over from, you know, two hundred and fifty bucks to four hundred and fifty bucks.
Well, I'm seeing some in seven hundred and ninety, eight hundred bucks.
Well, that's a twelve-foot shooting snow burst.
Yeah.
I actually like um the first one, the R-two-S, the, the snowflake over there on the upper right hand corner. I like that one.
That one.
Yes.
So if, if I can get a couple of volunteers to pick out designs, I'd appreciate it, cause you don't want them picking them out.
I, I believe it, it will be uh Mr. Jones and Miss Jo there and we'll be deciding them, yep.
We'll make sure we have a recommendation for the next council meeting.
Perfect. Any else streets?
No.
Alright. Moving on, water and sewer. Um SFC Civil Constructors Pay App Eleven for the lift station.
This is a partial pay request to get us very close to completion on this project. Uh all that's uh remaining is the HVAC that I discussed earlier, uh so we recommend authorization and payment for this, in this dollar amount.
A motion from Wells, second by Fish to approve Pay App Number Eleven for the lift station to SFC Civil Constructors. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Next one, First Rate Excavate Pay App Number One for the Risen Savior Sewer Service.
This was a sewer service that we had coordinated with the Risen Savior Catholic Church to remove and replace that went underneath Split Rock Boulevard and actually tied in the sanitary sewer that we were replacing on the Brandon Street Improvement Project, Park Improvement Project. And so we had gotten quotes from contractors. They've completed that work and the project went very smooth, I think. First Rate did a really good job of taking care of that for us. We wanted to remove that, so we don't have future maintenance of that sewer service. It was a connection that was only for Risen Savior that went through a right-of-way and, and it's, it was just a good idea to get rid of it. So I give credit, credit to Raleigh for that. But I, I recommend payment of this sewer service in the amount of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty cents.
Is that about what we thought it was gonna cost, Paul?
Yep, it's right on what we thought. There were some additional trees that we needed to remove that I didn't anticipate. I only had three in the quote and they ended up removing ten to get through there. That got pretty deep. It was all sand. So the trench got a little wider than expected, which again was coordinated with the Catholic Church. They were fine with it. In fact, I think they're removing a few more on their own in that area. We do, we do have some cleanup work to do still, but in the landscaping and, and I do have some sidewalk on this pay app still that needs to be paid when they get it done. They're not quite done with that yet.
A motion from Wells, second by Fish to approve Pay App Number One for First Rate Excavate for the Risen Savior Project. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Next item, Sukup Construction Pay App Three for the BioSolid Removal and Cell Regrading.
This is a pay request uh that we submitted or working with the contractor. Notice there is one uh, I guess uh dispute between the contractor and the city in regards to line item number four, which is the BioSolids Removal. Uh we've uh paid for a certain uh amount of those BioSolids and until we get those uh, that issue resolved. Uh we felt it was appropriate to get uh to a certain point paid for uh so that we're not worrying about interest on money and things like that. So we, it was our recommendation to move forward with a partial pay request on the BioSolids and the, until those items, that item has worked out. Uh Sukup Construction then checked with their attorney and actually uh their attorney recommended having, writing in a disclaimer on this pay application. I think we all understand that there's a dispute uh between us and the contractor uh about the total quantity and that's what we're gonna work out at the end here, so. Any questions for the BioSolids that we can discuss at this point?
John, when, when are you looking at that?
I can't answer that. I don't know. I don't know that answer. So I think that could all depend, it'll all depend on how far uh the contractor decides to take that, so.
I have a motion from Wells, second by Fish to approve the Pay App Number Three for Sukup. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
I would like to, would like to add one other thing, but go, go back to the street. Redwood Boulevard is open. All the residents have full access now uh to their street. Uh the thing that is closed is that west end only, uh so the residents can get in through the residential streets, in and out of all their driveways. So it's just from the, basically from the city's booster station or the sump in that roadway from there west to Redwood Boulevard that's closed off yet, so. Yes, yes, that is the one thing that's still detouring.
Okay. Resolution eleven eighteen, the water ban and restrictions.
Passing out the consumption history, uh since July first, we dropped from a peak of about one point nine million gallons a day for the two weeks prior to the ban going into place to about seven hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day as of yesterday. The resolution that you've got in your packet, and I've got a couple other drafts where you take a look at based upon discussion at the briefing meeting Thursday. The one in your packet will remove the ban and go to an odd even.
Mandatory?
Mandatory watering restrictions of odd even. And there's also some other restrictions on there uh pertaining to washing of vehicles and machinery, um ornamental fountains, swimming pools, et cetera. Based upon the conversation Thursday night at the, at the briefing meeting. Here's a couple other. First draft I'm handing out was just a continuing the ban. But it would remove all of the other restrictions, so uh we're getting a lot of requests for folks that wanna paint their house or stain their deck, which is currently prohibited. So that resolution, it's marked ban, would just continue with the ban, but all other water restrictions would be removed. Well, this would allow it to, yeah. You can paint your house. This uh. The one marked ban, you could, you could power wash your house in, in preparation for painting. And then the last draft that you wanna take a look at. It's marked odd even. That removes all of the prohibitions regarding outdoor surfaces, washing of mobile equipment, et cetera. And gets rid of the ban. But goes to uh restrictions of wa, odd even water, watering. There's also a note in there that uh if the council so chooses, if water usage exceeds a blank gallons per day, that we could place the ban back on automatically.
Can I make a few comments on this then? I've put a lot of time and, and thoughts into this um over the past, past couple of weeks. For those of you who don't know, we had a meeting Thursday and, and the consensus, I think, was that we leave the ban in place. To catch you up, I just want a couple of minutes. To catch you up, what we're, what we're doing, number one, we had two problems essentially. Number one, we had an immediate problem in the fact that we were using too much water as far as what was available to us. And what was available to us is, is the, the end result of our treatment facility, not all of the wells. We could have five additional wells right now and we are limited to our treatment facility, which is roughly two point one million gallons a day. Number two, the, the other end of this is to look towards the future to, to cure this problem, so it doesn't happen again. So immediate action, I was in favor of putting the ban in place. Obviously, safety comes first and we exceeded our numbers. There was just no, no other option at that point. But um regardless of how many wells, how many water towers, how much storage we have in place, we, we do need that, that potential to produce more water for our residents. I am in favor, and I have not met with any of the council members on this previous to this meeting, but I'm in favor of leaving getting rid of the ban and going back to water restrictions and, and actually, option three, I kinda like, I, I being able to wash cars and that type of stuff in our driveway. Um I consider this a leap of faith in humanity. I think, I think we owe it to our citizens. People pay a lot of money in Brandon to to be able to water their lawn and I don't think, I guess I look at it as this way, if my, if my teenager, which she's not a teenager yet, but if my teenager was driving a car and got a speeding ticket, I wouldn't take her car away forever. I would try and teach her not to speed and I think that's what we need to do and I think we've done that in, in creating a, a water ban and, and I think that it's been a good lesson, but I think we could move on. Brandon in itself is not using excessive amounts of water. We're, we're currently, before the ban was put into place, we were in that one point eight to one point nine million gallons a day at our peak, may, and, and actually maybe a little more than that. I ca, I made a bunch of phone calls and, and called a dozen different cities. Brookings, which is twice our population, uses about four million gallons a day and sometimes over five million gallons a day. In respect to that, we were nowhere near those numbers with regards to our population. Watertown, again, about double our population, twenty-two thousand, and we're ten thousand, uses about four and a half million a day. Pier, fourteen thousand population, has used in excess of six point two million a day, which is pretty excessive. So having said that, we, Brandon in itself is not, I don't think that we've necessarily used a, a massive amount of water. We've never had a watering ban in place before. We've had it in place for, what is it, three weeks now? I, I think that, I think the ban could be removed. Right now, without the, with the ban in place, we're, we're using approximately one million gallons per day less than what we were. That translates to thirty-six hundred dollars a day in revenue. So we're losing thirty-six hundred dollars a day right now with the ban in place. Um I know, I know we've talked about the cost of informing the residents and, and we spent roughly four grand informing the residents. This is true, but we're also losing almost that per day by having this ban in place. I'm in favor of removing the ban and I would ask the council to consider this, remove the ban, go back to even odd restrictions. I think the community, community is very well aware of what we've gone through and, and hopefully the reason that we've gone through it. And maybe we can be a little more self-conscious. I myself will take a, a shorter shower. Um things like lawn watering and, and washing your car with a, with a nozzle on the end, so it doesn't just run when it's on the ground, things like that. I think we need to be observant of and I, I think if we do, I don't, I don't, I honestly don't believe that there will be issues. If there is, I think we should, I think we should put in place that Brandon or Raleigh, if we reach those critical numbers that we can decide on, that we go back to a watering ban. People will say, yeah, but that will cost us, again, four thousand dollars or whatever it is to, to, to alert the citizens and I say, well, again, we're, we're losing that per day. We have, I think we have good safeguards in place to inform our citizens. Number one, we have our city's website. I don't know if those of you who are watching out in TV land, but on the front page of our website, you can register to have alerts emailed to you. Doesn't cost anything and it takes about ten seconds to do. I, I think that's a, a, an amazing way of getting the word out. It's very efficient, doesn't cost anything. And I think we can reach most of our community by doing that. Right now, we've only got about four hundred and twenty-three residents registered on that. I think, I think we need to improve that. So between the website, Facebook, the newspaper, and uh if all else fails, call City Hall. We've got recordings on there now. We've got uh postings posted over, all over town. I think that we need to take, take a leap of faith in humanity, give our citizens the right to have their water. I personally, I probably won't water my lawn for the rest of the year, but I think of my neighbors. I think of the people that really I've, that I've been contacted by that really want that right and I agree with that. I think they should have it, so. Having said that. I said this, I said it was kind of a twofold problem. Number one, the, the immediate actions needed. Number two, the, to prepare for the future. I'll, I'll spend sixty more seconds here telling you again that our capacity right now is two point one million a day. Brookings, their capacity is six point five million a day. They're twice our population. They're three times our capacity. Watertown, fourteen million a day. Their, their capacity is fourteen million a day, that's with three plants. They plan to have one down at all times for maintenance, so technically they're about ten million a day. Their population is twice that of us, or a little over twice, twenty-two thousand. And lastly, but not least, Pier, they can produce ten million a day. Their population's fourteen thousand residents. Roughly, we're not much smaller than that and we're about a fifth of that capability. I think that's something that we need to look for in the future, look towards, work on, and I myself will be diligent on working on this matter, but for now, I'm in favor of option three.
Brian, I'd like to hear from you because the last time we did this is because we didn't have enough water. If there is a house fire, and that's my biggest thing. God forbid any of our houses go up in flames because we want enough water to be able to do it. Now, the reason that we had to do that is because of that reason and we had a mandatory watering restriction on since beginning of June, even odd, and still we had to go to mandatory ban. So, and then it took us the four thousand dollars to spend to put that mandatory thing on. So what I wanna know from you guys is, do we have enough water now, which I'm assuming we do, if there is a house fire? That's my biggest concern. If there is a house fire or even two house fires, you know, what's our, are we able to put one out at this point? And if we do go back to this watering ban, like we've had since the first part of June. What are, what's the way that we're gonna get the word out to everybody? I mean, people all said we didn't hear about it before, which we, we've posted it more out this year than we ever have. So I, I'm confused with, with people's reasoning and how we're gonna go about doing this.
If, if we eliminate the ban and if people follow, eh eh, real quick down and dirty numbers, if we're looking at a million gallons a day going on lawns. It's about where we're at. If half those people water on even days and half of them water on odd days, you can add about five hundred thousand gallons to you know, we should be up around one point three, one point four million gallons a day. If everybody follows even odd. Divide that million gallons by half. We can sustain that. We set one point six million as a trigger. Uh yeah, it does stress the system a little bit, but we can sustain one point six. We can even sustain a little bit above there. So if everybody does odd even, we should be fine. Problem is when, when people don't know when they're watering, I don't know how many people I've talked to on the phone, they don't know that they're watering, number one. I've had numerous people tell me when we put a sign in their yard, well, we're not watering. Well, yeah, you are, cause we saw your sprinklers on. So number one, they don't know when they're watering. Number two, they don't know how long they're watering. Number three, they don't know what, how much water they're putting on their yards. So if people can go to odd even watering system and follow it, and it does take some diligence on their part, cause a lot of the systems don't have an updated computer that says odd even, it's every other day or whatever. You've gotta go in and check those systems and make sure they're programmed correctly. And the other thing is if people would, would measure how much water they're putting on their yard, right now, when I talk to folks, I don't know how much I'm putting on, it's twenty minutes. Well, how much is it? I don't know. You know, an inch a week sustains a yard, so if people would measure how much water they're putting on, follow the odd even schedule, I think it's sustainable, it's sustainable production.
That's if people, I mean, that's if they measure how much water they want. That's if people, I mean, that's if they measure how much water they put in.
And Joe, in addition to that, I, I, I agree. We put restrictions in place and they weren't followed, but we've been on a watering ban now for long enough. I think most, I think the community knows and is educated a little better about the situation. I really believe in our community on this. I really believe that, that more people are aware. The people that didn't know that they were watering, I think they know now. The people that had no clue, they're aware now. And at the end of the day, this, I may fail, this all may be for nothing. We may hit watering ban again, and if we do, the comment is, you know, I guess the question would come up, "Well, what do we do with those people that say, 'I didn't know'?" I'm going to say ignorance is, is not an excuse on this. If I get stopped with expired tags and I say, "Well, I didn't know, because I honestly didn't know," I'm still probably going to get a ticket. With, with these forms of communication in place, especially the website, that will send out an automatic alert email to you, I don't think anybody can claim or has, nobody has the right to claim ignorance on this. You have multiple modes of communication to determine whether we're on a watering restriction or a watering ban, and I just think it's something we need to pay a little more attention to. I think we need to pay a little more attention to our community when it comes to natural resources, water, et cetera, and I just, what can I say? I just, I just have faith that this could work.
Yes.
I have been talking to a lot of the people that are in the ward that I live in, and the ward that I'm in is a little bit different, and there may be others in the district or in the city that are that way, but probably, I know I can count 25 homes that can water and are watering almost every day, and they can do it. They have private wells. They're not on, on the city system. And that frustrates the ones around who are on the city system and having to shut it off. One, the west side of Country Club Boulevard, from the time you come in until you get two houses from, down from my house across the street are on individual wells. All the houses up around to the north are on individual wells. The rest of us are on city water. So, those people, when other people see them watering the heck out of things, they, that's, they, you know, and I tell people when I talk to them, they didn't have any problem going on the watering restrictions that we did, but there's, there's the thought out there that if I got it, I can do it, I can do it. And I don't, I don't disagree with what, going back to the odd even. I have my lawn, I took, had my water guy come out there, and we figured it out, he's got the math for it, I don't. I just know how to turn it on and off. And my watering system waters once a week, and it waters enough to put an inch on my yard, and that's all I water. Now, during this restriction, needless to say, I shut it off. But, so yes, that has certainly a big part of it, you need to know what you're putting on the yard. And so, I'm, I'd be willing to back off on it, as, as Don is talking about, but, you know, there's still those out there that do what they want.
Anybody from the crowd? Again, name, address?
How about me?
I know who you are, but you still have to.
Jeff Gray, 207 East Tabor Court. So, I, I'm not real good at math. $4,000. Thinking you guys just spent about 3, 4 million dollars on projects. Educating the public is expensive. Is there a slurry seal project going on? There's a sign on Rice Street, I don't know, are there on other streets?
Yep.
So, just keep the slurry seal, okay? Secondly, I think people were watering after the ban, so who drove around and put signs in their yard and enforced it? I don't know. That's a question.
Aye.
Okay?
Yeah.
Then, we do the same thing. If they're, if they're not odd even, then you say you get one warning, second time, turn your water off. It's pretty simple. Don said, "You know what? Chief's here, get caught speeding, you take, you know, you're going to get a ticket." So, I think people in our neighborhood know, wife and I like to water. We never didn't abide by odd even, never. And trust me, our grass is as, well, used to be, as green as anybody around, okay? So, I, I guess in addition to that, and I think Mr. Wells has brought up, something needs to be done for the future as well. So, I, hopefully you got your eyes open here as to the treatment plan.
Oh, yes.
This is, this is something that had to be done immediately.
I have no problem with what was done, and if it was being, if the, if they weren't abiding by it, I think Don said, "Yeah, you, you woke some people up." And obviously, there were people that weren't abiding by it based on what Brian said, if we do odd even, should be half a million gallons a day. So, like anything else, any law you make, or ordinance or whatever, it's got to be enforced. Sorry, you got to drive around, Raleigh. I got a moped out front, you get 100 miles of the gallon with, so if you want to use that. So, anyway, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Again, purple button, please.
My name's Tony Ballack, I live at 405 East Dogwood Street. All due respect, I applaud your faith in humanity, but I, I see people who didn't give two squats about your watering ban. I shall, I lost money for my wife and I put in a new backyard, and I didn't even come get the exception, because I don't want to lose my home if there's a fire and you can't put it out. As far as I'm concerned, the ban stayed in place for another month, ain't hurting anybody. It's grass, it's dormant. Really? People that worried about grass, or they're worried about their homes and their livelihoods or somebody killed, killed in a fire? As far as I'm concerned, fill them up to the max, and then you can take the ban off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and with respect to that, I, I say remove the ban, but I also said, when we reach critical numbers, the ban goes back in place. By, I voted for this ban in the first place, because we were at critical numbers, and to me, there's no, there's no discussion, it has to be done. And we have reserves to protect against getting into that situation that we can, that we can use, and I, again, I think if we reach a critical number, we go back to the ban, no questions asked. If someone's violating the odd even, sign their yard and, and take forth action that we took forth during the ban, I don't, I don't have a, you know, a problem with that. I just, I, I think there's a lot of people in this community, I, I understand there might be one or two that say, "I'm not going to wa, I'm not going to water," I'm telling you right now, "I probably won't water my lawn for the rest of the year." I, I, when this, when the water restrictions went into place, I turned my sprinklers off for good. But I'm telling you, the percentage of this community wants that ability to water their lawn and wash their cars, you know, in their driveway type of thing. I'm frugal, I don't like to spend, I don't like to go to the car wash, I want to water it myself. Plus, it's a, I want to do the job myself, it gets better, it gets done better. And I think there's a lot of people in this community that feel that way, and I think we owe it to them, because we're not going to put ourselves in jeopardy. We're not going to put ourselves in jeopardy and reach a critical number to where a fire can't be put out. We will enforce a ban before it goes back to that point.
Is this something that we can revisit each meeting? I mean, do we have to yea or nay today?
Well, right now, the ban is in place, so unless the council changes that, that watering ban stays. We can visit it every, every meeting. We'll give you an update as to where we're at with usage. We can do a report at every meeting, just like we do with the water, or the pond reclamation project.
We don't even have to vote on this today.
You don't have to, if you take no action, the ban stays in place, the restrictions on everything else that was in place since June, such as washing of buildings, washing of vehicles, pools, et cetera, remain in place as well. What all of these, all of these resolutions or draft resolutions do is repeal those two resolutions, the prior ones, instituting the ban and instituting the, the restrictions. So, if you want to change the restrictions and leave the ban in place, you can do that. That would be the, the draft marked "ban."
Yeah, I think we need to get those restrictions out, but people are trying to paint their houses. I think that's more critical than grass personally, so I would be in favor of that.
And do their decks and whatnot, but...
So, that's which one?
The one marked "ban."
That's the one.
Yep. All that does is it repeals resolutions 517 and 1117, and just places the ban on watering yards and vegetation. Sprinkling watering or irrigating of yards and grass is hereby prohibited. Watering of trees, shrubs, gardens, vegetables, and flowers between the hours of 10 a.m., 6 p.m. is prohibited. Very similar to what the ban is currently.
Okay, well, let's just put it out there. I'll make a motion, we'll see where it goes. For the ban.
I'm in a second round.
All right, any other discussion out there?
Off the table?
Yes.
I just had one other comment.
Sure.
I mean, I was at the last meeting, and the only discussion was, we couldn't put out a house fire. What if Pace goes up? What if Blockowski goes up? It's going to be a hell of a lot harder to put out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Egan, Jeff Gray, 207 East Tabor Court. So, interestingly, pretty much everything that's going around here, council people have said, "Paul, should we pay this? Mr. Brown, should we pay this? I think you've heard a recommendation, if we use a half a million dollars a ga, half a million gallons a day, an issue." I think I heard Mr. Brian say that.
Yeah.
Hit the purple button. There you go, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yet you're not listening to the people that have the suggestion that we're going to be okay. I don't want any houses burnt down either, okay? Obviously, we don't want that. But this ban's going to continue, I think, I heard, until we got a new treatment plan. Is that an issue?
That's not what I'm, no, no, that's not what we said. Come off tonight.
I want the ban to come off tonight and go to, back to watering restrictions. I just...
So, so what, what Don is saying is, you're not going to find out if we abide by the rule until we change the rule. Enforce the rule. Change your resolution that you don't get any warnings, whatever it is. But waiting another two weeks, what's that proving?
Well, I have a motion and a second. Motion from Fish, second, Houseman, to include the ban, to stay with the ban, but allow decks to be power washed, houses to be power washed, all that. Okay? I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
For two weeks, then we meet again.
Okay.
Because every two weeks, we're going to, we're going to revisit it, so...
Jeff Gray, 207 East Tabor Court. What's going to change, Joe? What's going to change in two weeks?
Okay, we're going to, we're going to keep an eye on this, so, and we're going to keep an eye on it, but I'm telling you, I don't want any houses to burn down. That's that. I'm going with the ban, and that's that.
Rain doesn't, am I right? Rain doesn't have anything to do with it? It's the treatment center? Is that right?
Yeah. Personally, I think whether it rains or not, people set their sprinkler systems to go at a certain time of day, a certain day of the week, and if it go, if it rains, they're not going out there to turn those sprinkler systems off. It doesn't happen. So, whether it rains or not, I don't think is an issue. I think it's a matter of educating the people to use the odd even schedule, to water an inch a week roughly, and be conservative, conservative about it. I, I agree, I, what's, what's going to change in two weeks? If it rains, we're still going to have the same capabilities, the same outflow per day, and peoples, people aren't going to be reprogramming their sprinkler systems just because it rained. It's not going to happen.
I call the question.
With that being said, I have a motion and a second to keep the watering of yards still prohibited, but allowing them to power wash their deck, houses, water, vegetation, those things. With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, it's three to one. Does not pass.
It's a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution, okay.
It doesn't occur, it's, no spending occurred.
Okay. So, three to one, it passed. All right. Anything else? Water, sewer? All right. Other business, we have a work session, correct?
Budget work session as well as an executive session.
Okay, so what are we going to do first?
Let's do the exec session first, we'll kick everybody out.
Okay.
Shouldn't take long, more than five, 10 minutes at the most.
Yeah.
Okay.
Litigation.
So, I need a motion to go into executive session for litigation.
No movement.
A motion from Brooke, seconded by Houseman, to go into executive session for litigation. Thank you for coming, thank you for your input.
Yes, thank you.
I, I appreciate it.
Unless you keep on the agenda.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.